Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance and direction as we come together for this meeting this evening. Grant us the strength to manage the challenge ahead and the wisdom to identify these as opportunities as we strive to serve the members of the Lima community. As we make decisions on behalf of the city, grant us the gift of an open mind and the willingness to learn and the humility to accept the ideas of others. Please help us to recognize diversity as a blessing and unity as our strength. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Neper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lo.
Here.
Mr. Teppin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon. Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I would move to add the Safety Services Report to the tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda by adding the Safety Services Committee report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that item A in the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and item B be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Utilities requesting legislation for continuing professional services for power engineers need.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number one be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Bell and Kaler Associates.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I may the communication number two be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Community Development requesting real estate tax assessments for property maintenance code charges.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication be received and filed legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to advertise for bids and enter into a contract to reconstruct certain sidewalks.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to contract continuing services through Spierion.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number five be received and filed legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to purchase real property from Metzger Family Revoked Living Trust.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a transfer of a permit from RTRG LLC to Three Lees LLC.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that communication number seven to be received and filed. The clerk authorized to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Mayor requesting legislation to enter into a parking agreement with John Heapy.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed and that the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? Mr. President. Mr. Teppin.
As John Heapy is my brother-in-law, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Teppin. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Many reports, I'm sorry, reports of officials. Chief Martin, regarding the 2012 crime numbers.
Mr. President, members of council, I'm here this evening to present a report on the Uniform Crime Report Part I Crimes that occurred in the city of Lima in 2012. UCR Part I crimes include murder, rape, robbery, assault, burglary, larceny, and auto thefts. I'm also providing a comparison with 2011's crime numbers. Each member of council has received a bar graph which shows the number of Part I crimes as reported in each ward for both 2011 and 2012. Before going any further, it is important to explain that the bar graph which was given to council shows the number of incident reports taken by the Lima Police Department in each of the crime categories. This is different than the citywide numbers that are reported to the FBI for the Uniform Crime Report. What is reported to the FBI is actually the number of victims for each offense. As an example, if two people were assaulted in a single incident, the bar graph reflects a single incident report having been made, but the data reported to the FBI will show two offenses, one offense counted for each victim. That is why this report shows an overall reduction of 5.8 percent in UCR Part I offenses, while the UCR data as reported to the FBI shows an overall reduction of 2.1 percent. Unfortunately, our software does not have the ability to break down the data reported to the FBI by ward, so I am providing the information that I believe will be most beneficial to council members. In looking at crime in 2012 as compared to 2011, we found both good and bad news. The good news, as already mentioned, is the reduction of 5.8 percent in the total number of reported incidents of Part I crime for last year. That reduction was realized in five of the city's seven wards. Citywide, we experienced an 8 percent reduction in property crimes, which included a 21 percent reduction in burglaries. Now for the bad news, we experienced a 16 percent increase in UCR Part I violent crimes. The Part I violent crimes include homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assaults. Perhaps the most notable increase in the violent crime was found in the category of aggravated assaults, which increased by 20 percent or 52 actual incidents. The two wards which experienced an increase in overall Part I crime were the fourth and seventh wards. The fourth ward, as can be seen on the bar graph, saw eight more reported incidents of Part I crimes in 2012. And in reviewing the various crime categories within the fourth ward, the ward experienced a significant increase in assaults, as was experienced citywide. The seventh ward experienced a very significant increase in overall UCR Part I crime, with 296 incidents of Part I crime being reported in the seventh ward for 2011, but 378 incidents were reported in 2012. This additional 82 incidents reported were actually attributable to shoplifting, as 115 additional shoplifting incidents were reported in 2012 versus the previous year. Even though the third ward experienced an 8.59 percent reduction in overall crime, the third ward again had the highest number of reported incidents of Part I crimes within the city. And the third ward will subsequently be receiving much attention from our pinpoint officers throughout this year. Going forward, the Lima Police Department will continue to look for better ways to analyze our crime data in an effort to be more proactive in preventing crime. We will certainly continue our efforts to solve crimes and arrest those who are responsible for crime once it has occurred, but we also believe it is important to prevent crimes whenever and wherever possible as well. To these ends, we ask that everyone living within our community partner with us by acting as our eyes and ears. When someone sees something they believe to be suspicious, we ask that they call us, and we would rather be called about something that turns out to be nothing than to not be called when we could have perhaps prevented someone from becoming a victim. Also, we ask that people be willing to step forward as witnesses when they have information that may help us to solve a crime. For most every crime that occurs, whether it's a property crime or homicide, there is usually someone that has the information we need to solve that crime. Even sometimes seemingly small bits of information that may seem to be unimportant can often be the difference between a crime being solved or remaining unsolved. Much work still needs to be done to reduce crime within the city of Lima, and the Lima Police Department will continue to do all that we can within the resources available to further reduce crime and to improve the quality of life for everyone visiting, working, or living within Lima. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I've got a couple of things here to say. I'm very excited about the sixth ward. We, we did 18 percent, and that's come from the pinpointing, that comes from our Good Neighbor Association, that come from our folks. It's exciting for us today, you know, because this used to be high, and now it's low today. And I'm, you know, when I looked at that minus 18 percent, that's great, that's showing that we are, you guys are doing a good job out there, also the Neighbor Association and the folks. So we want to keep it like that, but I want to see it lesser next time, so we'll just keep moving in a good direction. And I thank everybody for that, and you guys too, because without you guys' help, you know, you guys end up pinpointing and taking the calls and making sure everything going right. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any things? Thank you, Chief. Next, Howard Elstro regarding 2012 demolition activities.
Mr. President of council, I want to provide you a brief report on the demolition activity by the city of Lima and the Building and Zoning Division. The NSP Neighborhood Stabilization Program is now complete. The city received a total of $1,409,084, and that enabled us to demolish 220 residential structures at an average cost of about $6,400 a piece. We are currently using proceeds from the Attorney General's Demolition Fund, which is known as Going Forward Ohio, Moving Ohio Forward Grant, sorry, and we have available to us $288,000. This will enable us to demolish 42 residential structures. Currently, we have 18 which are permitted and released to the contractor and orders out on another 21 properties. Seven properties are currently in appeal. When these funds are expended, this will be a total of 262 properties between the NSP and the AG Demo grant funds that we have been able to take down in our community. Bill Brown and his staff look for the properties which are in the most serious condition, and those are the ones which proceed to the top of the list. I also want to thank, oh, I would like to say, we anticipate by the end of April, 1st of May, we will have these 42 properties demolished. And I would like to just add a note of comment and thanks to the Department of Community Development, who does the grant filing and the reporting for these grant funds. And I would especially like to extend a thanks to the Law Department, who does all of the upfront research of these properties. It's very onerous to find out who owns these, who should be notified, making sure that we proceed with the policies and the ORC regulations of notification and due process, and also provides assistance in recovery of funds. May remind council and remind the community while we're on the subject that we make every effort to recover whatever funds we can. If someone walks away from a property, that does not necessarily mean they walk away from the financial responsibility. If they have assets, we plan to pursue those financial assets and make the city and the taxpayers whole. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Yes, I would like, also like to echo the thank yous to the various departments, but also the Appeals Committee. I attended quite a few of those meetings and sat in just to see the process. This was an extra last couple of years, busy for them, a lot of properties just go through and hold meetings. And the volunteers that serve on that committee need a special thank you as well, and I appreciate all the work they did for their concern in putting responsible property back in the hands of those that showed proof they could make improvements and also to proceed with the demo when that was not evident, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
Mr. Elstro, so that when I present this to the East Side Neighborhood Association or anyone else that asks me, this 220 residential structure that we demolished was from a period of what to what?
We have had access to the NSP funds approximately two and a half years, so that's been the duration that we have been pursuing those properties and demolishing those.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Howard, do we have any, I sent in today 15 houses, yeah, today, I turned them in today. We have any new money to take them down, the 42, could we add on to them 42?
Those properties, like any property of which we receive a complaint, will be submitted to a list and investigated by our Building Commissioner, Bill Brown, and his assistant building inspectors. If they find cause for demolition, in other words, if there is by the codified ordinance cause that qualifies that for a dangerous structure, the property owner will be sent notice to demolish. And we will pursue it in that way. If the property owner takes it upon themselves and tears this down per the demolition order, then that will be the end of it. If for some reason the property owner cannot be found, or it still remains, then it would be added to a list such as this, and when funds are found, then we would pursue anything in that list, again, on the descending order of the severity of the deteriorated state of the structure.
Yes, I have one on Bastard in Erika, and he taking his own firehouse down by himself. I have not seen a permit there. Is he allowed to do that? The neighbors was complaining, matter of fact, I discussed with him Sunday, half of Sunday dealing with that problem, and he taking this structure down himself. And I don't know if he went through the city, nothing taped up in the window, and they complaining about all the stuff coming on their side, so.
Look, if you provide me with that address, I'll check to see if a permit is taken out. The simple answer, can a property owner demolish his own property? Yes, he or she can. It is in their interest to seek a demolition order for a couple of reasons. First of all, it's the law. Secondly, our demolition instructions will instruct them on the proper way to backfill that lot so there is no continuing problems on that lot. And thirdly, that actually assists the property owner, because it notifies the county auditor that structure does not exist, and their taxes will be, their tax rate will be amended accordingly. So if you don't get a demolition permit, I think you're doing yourself a disservice financially.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Reports of Committee's Safety Services Committee. Mr. Glenn.
Yes, I can read it all. We had a Safety Service Committee on 2/4/13, and we talked about taking money out of the Safety Service Support Program funding. We see, we approved $3,000 for equipment for Room 15. They had old equipment, the police department, so we donated $3,000 out of the Safety Service Support Program Fund. The people who attended was Derek Glenn, the Chair, Theresa Adams, Sam McLean, Jesse Lo, Councilman Paige Townsend, Committee Member, Renee Bartez, Major Currattes, the City Law Director, and Jason from WIMA, and Bob Blake. So we approve this, and I like to make a motion that everyone approve this at these minutes.
Second.
The motion in the second is that we receive, file, and approve the committee report as submitted by Councilor Glenn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Moving on to ordinances, Ordinance 2813.
Leaving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 2813 be passed on its first reading.
Second. Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 2813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 2813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 2913.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the construction of certain sidewalks for the 2013 combined sidewalk project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that Ordinance Number 2913 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 2913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 2913 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 3013.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Spierion.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 2013 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is that Ordinance 3013 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Yes, I would just like to add for those that didn't attend any of the Finance Committee meetings, especially where Ms. Odom was on the agenda for her department, it was explained at the time that the present planner had left, and so we have a void there, as we did last summer. So I will be supporting this. We have some very important issues coming forward for zoning, Main Street corridor, and some other issues, as well as the upcoming department issues pertaining to zoning, so if we could, that's why I think the hours are low, the amount, compared to last year when we had to go through this exercise. So I will be supporting and hope others will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
No.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
No.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yeah. Ordinance 3013 has been passed by a six to two vote on its first reading. Ordinance 3113.
Authorizing the mayor to purchase certain real property located at the southwest corner of Jamison Avenue and West North Street, a road right of way.
Mr. President. Mr. Teppin. I move that Ordinance 31-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 3113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Ordinance 3113 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 3213.
Authorizing a dispersment from the Safety Services Support Fund.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Order 3213 be passed as of the minute.
Second. Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
We're not going to read the ordinance out loud. You said has read.
I mean, no, first read. Passed the first read.
Thank you. The second?
I was seconding what he meant. Okay.
The motion, the intent of the motion expressed was to pass Ordinance 3213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Neper.
Yes. Ordinance 3213 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 3313.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Humane Society of Allen County.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Ordinance 3313 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 3313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Mr. President. Mr. President. Mr. Glenn.
Yes, first of all, I know this was an ongoing problem about the cat problem over the years, and I know we had brought it to the city council a couple of years ago, and I know I lost some good neighbors behind that, and I know we didn't take action on it that much. I know Sam McLean, he worked very hard in our committee. I'm glad to see you guys put together some things to make this happen, because this is a problem we have in our city, and I'm glad to see this go, and I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn, Mr. Lo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this week has been very enlightening for me. I've had a lot of people approach me on both sides of the fence, that at the end of the day, we need to do something. And I asked the individual that approached me, what is your solution? It didn't have a solution, or the solution they had was not a very nice solution. At the end of the day, we need to do something. I'm proud that it came through Neighborhood Concerns Committee and that something is about to be done. We have requested that all data, all reporting, that the Humane Society come back and let us know exactly what's going on and what they were able to do, and we're going to hold them to the fire on it. And I believe that, his name slipped me, Michael, I believe, Michael, I believe Mr. Michael is sincere about his position, and he takes what he does very serious, and we're going to give him an opportunity to prove himself to the city of Lima. So for those that are complaining about the cats, give us a minute and let us work with the Humane Society so that we can put a stop to it to the best of our ability and to the best of their ability. I will be supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I too want to thank the Humane Society, the opportunity to have a successful program is because of the partnership that they're providing with their abilities to do the work and to have the understanding and the expertise required to deal with these situations. We talked about at the meeting, and I think both other councilors have mentioned this, that this has been a long time coming, and we're now beginning a process that may take a while, but it's something that needs to be done, and neutering and spaying these animals And I think Mr. Lay has some information he wanted to give the councillors. Is that true? I don't know when you want to do that.
He can bring it forward now if he wants. That's fine. I don't have an objection. Does anybody else have an objection?
Can I keep talking?
Yeah. I assume he's just going to pass those out.
One of the questions I keep getting is the idea where the cats are removed, neutered, and returned, re-released. And there's information in this packet that talks about why that is the right thing, the right way to do it, I guess. And so I'm happy to have this information that I can respond after I read it to that question. But that's, I think that's the main question. Why are you releasing them? Why, you know, why don't you just take care of them? So.
That's right.
There's a reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Is there any further discussion? I'm just going to say my piece. I'm not going to support this, and I have two reasons. Number one, in trying to do a little research, it's very, very difficult to find any information on the internet that is objective in nature. Plenty of information from organizations that have these programs in place. Obviously, they support them. Faults can be found with those programs by organizations who don't believe in it. The only thing I found that was somewhat objective was one study that frankly came out of an area in Chicago. And they started with eleven cats and went through this program. They gained a cat somewhere, which was obviously a dumped cat, one that was abandoned and introduced into the group there. And that was soon adopted out. Eight other cats either were classified as missing, and they remained with three at the end of the study period. So that doesn't really give me much information in terms of supporting it. The bigger problem I have, and I'm going to, actually a very perfect example here this evening. I can't get my arms around tax dollars being used for this program, okay? From the sounds of it, it'll probably pass. I hope it's successful. Maybe I'll be proven wrong, but I still cannot get my arms around using tax dollars for this. And while we're wanting to put ten thousand dollars to this, which I'm just going to be honest, may work, may not work. We're spending ten thousand dollars on the hope that it will work and that because we haven't had anything that we can do in the past. Yet, we have a split vote over spending sixty-four hundred dollars on known services that are needed by the city, simply because it's contracted out. And we're contracting this out. I'm just, I just have some real principle issues with this. I have a problem in the bottom line with spending taxpayer dollars on this issue in this manner. So I will not be supporting the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
No.
And Mr. Neifer?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-three thirteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to one vote. Ordinance thirty-four thirteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with URS Corporation.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance number thirty-four thirteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance thirty-four thirteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Neifer?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-four thirteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance thirty-five thirteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Pauline Taylor Associates.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance thirty-five thirteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance thirty-five thirteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Neifer?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-five thirteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance thirty-six thirteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Azteca Systems, Inc.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance thirty-six thirteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance thirty-six thirteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Neifer?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-six thirteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance thirty-seven thirteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Power Engineers, Inc.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance number thirty-seven thirteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance thirty-seven thirteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Neifer?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-seven thirteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Miscellaneous business, Mr. McLean?
A couple of quick items this morning, this evening, so sorry.
We didn't go that long.
My day's been long.
Quick items, huh?
I would like to congratulate Jerry Glenn again for his stepping up to the plate and having a news conference about the Safety Service Fund. That fund was started a number of years ago, and it has helped our police and fire department purchase things that were beyond the realm of what we felt that was necessary in our general fund. I guess in what I'm going to say tonight is I would like to invite anyone in the city of Lima business or personal to contribute to that fund. Just earmark your check to the Safety Service Fund, and it will be equally divided. If you want to go to the police department, say police department. If you want the fire department, go to the fire department. If you don't, it's going to be equally divided between the two. That fund has produced good results, and it's designed that it has to go back to the Safety Service Committee before any of that money's spent. So it is by design to help the police and the fire department obtain things that they need in their department, needs that they need that the general fund may not support. So I appreciate Jerry Glenn's effort. This started a long time ago, and I would like for everyone to contribute as much as they can. Secondly, the Northside Neighborhood Association will hold their meeting on the nineteenth. This meeting is going to be changed to Northland Bowling Alley. We're going to have a little change of venue. I guess we're going to have some pizza. So anyone's welcome, come in and introduce yourself. Anyone, first, second, third ward that wants to come into our meeting is more than welcome. That's the north inside that we try to contribute to. That's at seven o'clock. Normally, it's at St. Gerard's Parish Hall, but this time it's going to be at Northland Bowling Alley. That'd be my spiel for the night.
Thank you, Mr. McLean, Mr. Low.
Thank you, Mr. President. Eastside Neighborhood Association will meet tomorrow at Forest Park Church at seven P.M., and that's located at three fifteen Collins Avenue. The other thing that I would like to mention is the Ohio Association of beauticians will be sponsoring a black and gold night of jazz. It will be a dance. They're asking that all wear, come in there black or gold or black and gold. Again, that's March the sixteenth. That'll be at the Holiday Inn Express, and you can pick up tickets at one thirty-two South McDonald, or you can speak with me. The tickets are twenty-five dollars apiece, and that does include your meal, okay? And it's open buffet, so you can eat fifty-dollar worth of food if you want to. Two things, I'm pleased with the report that Mr. Elstro gave this evening, but I want to publicly thank, I did call her, but I want to publicly thank Ms. Adams for her work on the two houses on East High, eleven oh seven and eleven oh one. It was a long time coming.
Yeah.
She made a lot of individuals very, very happy, except for the Possum family, once Ben started.
They upset.
Yeah, they took off and scattered. So I just want to thank Amy publicly. I know I was very nerve-wracking to her, but I just, I wanted to see them down. And again, thank you. And to Mr. Jim Link also, with his efforts. We also got a report this evening from the police department. I'm glad to see that third actually went down, but since I've been a constable within the city of Lima, the, I don't think that more reporting is a bad thing, or when numbers go up. That means people are speaking up. And I think when we see like other areas where it went up a little bit, like Seventh, you know, people are speaking up and getting police to come out and do what they're to do. So I don't look at this as a bad thing. I see that we only went down, you know, eight point, about eight and a half percent. But there's a lot of people speaking up. And, you know, when I look at first ward and second ward, I believe, you know, all those walks that were done by the neighborhood association and outdoor to door with individuals, I think that helped greatly to see that number decrease. So I'm proud of what Third Ward is doing, and I'm proud to see that these numbers are going down. But I do have, on the flip side of that, I would like to say, and I'm going to call this home out publicly because nothing seems to be getting done. I've watched a pit bull attack a gentleman. I've watched the neighbors repeatedly allow this dog to go outside with no chain, no muzzle, no anything, and that is at five thirty-six West Wayne. And I'm begging for something to happen. Kids in the neighborhood can't go outside because they don't know when this dog is going to attack. And it's all the time. It's all the time. And the neighbors in the, I felt so bad the other day because the lady sat within her car blowing her horn repeatedly, to the point where you knew something was wrong. And when I opened my own back door, he charges my back door, there's an issue. She feels like a prisoner in her own home. There's three pit bulls in this one house. But I'm asking that we do something, please, about this certain house in its five thirty-six West Wayne. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Low, Mr. McLean. Sorry, Mr. Teppin?
Going the other way?
The other way. Well, I didn't take that. You know how Sammy, sometimes he remembers things later on.
What'd I do to you?
Excuse me, the Honorable Mr. Teppin.
Yeah, the Boulevard Neighborhood Association. We'll have a joint meeting. It'll be the Boulevard Neighborhood Association, Sharon Park, and Lakewood West. It will be tomorrow evening, February the twelfth, at seven P.M. at the Community Resource Center, which is formerly Fire Station Number Four, fourteen forty West Spring. And I think that I mentioned at one of the previous meetings, I went to the first joint meeting they had there, and the facility really is going to work out well for Lacknep and these neighborhood associations. For one thing, with these three neighborhood associations coming together like this, the attendance was very impressive. And I think that it got some people excited. I think it will only grow from there. So thanks, Bob, for the information, and please show up if you're interested in one of those neighborhood associations or those neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teppin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few items. First, Midway East will be meeting on the twenty-first at seven P.M. at seven twenty-seven East Kibbe. I'd like to make mention of Lacknep's Seventh Annual International Expo. It's, the theme of it this year is called It's a Small, Small World. Will be held Sunday, March third, at two o'clock to six P.M. at a new location at St. Rita's Auxiliary Center at seven eighteen West Market Street. The admission is free. I've had the pleasure to attend those the last few years. Highly educational, enjoyable, the entertainment, the cultures, the food, what everyone brings to the table. And it's just, it's a very great gathering of cultures, and encourage everyone to attend. I would also like to make mention of the West Central Ohio Manufacturing Consortium and Rhode State College. They've got a new class starting March fourth through the twentieth. Meets three days a week, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, from ten A.M. to three P.M. It's a forty-hour course, and you will earn referrals, job opening information, invitation to job fairs, networking nights, free computer training, and other events. Then it will enhance your chances of employment, and it is free. If you're interested in attending this forty-hour course starting March fourth, please call four one nine 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 five eight three five three by March first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you guys again, all the neighborhood association. There's no way I can repay everyone who did what they had to do. So all the neighborhood association, give me a call, give me all you guys a pizza party. Eighteen percent who are doing good. And I'm excited about this. And this comes from you guys doing a good job. And just contact me, and I'll have my aide take care of some of the stuff there. But we're going to celebrate this day, you know, and this is a bribe and rights for the sixth ward. Because you guys did a lot of work over the years to get these numbers down. Any percent is great. Minus eighteen percent, that's even greater. So I appreciate you guys. And I'm on cloud nine when Ms. Adams showed me, when I walked to my desk, I'm like, wow, this is great. So I thank God, and I thank all you guys for getting this done. Second of all, I'm working very hard proposing the program, cadet program, for the city of Lima. This program, we're trying to work on recruiting minorities for the police department. Also, we'll be talking about how we're going to be doing testing, putting the testing on the road a little bit. When I say putting it on the road, going out recruiting, we want to recruit from Lima, and we'll be trying to go around two hours away and recruit minorities or whoever want to be involved in Lima Police Department. So I'm putting in a safety service committee, it'll be a joint committee. It will be human resource and safety service, because we got to talk to the civil service board too. So I want to make a motion that I take this to the Safety Service Committee and also the Human Resource Committee.
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer the issue of recruitment to the Safety Services and Human Resources Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
We had the date set already on Valentine Day, but I get a text from the Fifth Fourth City Council, I'd be in trouble, but I, I won't make that timing. So I'm going to give Sally the time, because all the guys can't make it on Valentine Day. I understand, we all got to take our wives out for Valentine Day. Me too. So it's not going to be any impact, and so I got to do it too. But we'll make sure we get that taken care, and Sally will email everyone. And I think Vince was the only one who would have a problem with his timing there, but we're going to make sure, we make sure Vince schedules a board on that. Okay. Second of all, we got our first, I got our first payment and some calls for our Safety Service Support Fund. I will give this to Mr. Raymond from Nancy and Jim Byers. They donated to the fire department and the police department, so I will be giving that to you. That's one donation there. Today is a special day for us today. This is our Kid of the Week, and I'd be excited about this whenever we got kids doing an outstanding job in school. Quentin Factor, his parents, Jody Factor and Randy Factor. He's a fifth grader at Liberty Art Magnum. Quentin have all As on his report card. His favorite subject is math. He played viola for this orchestra, for the orchestra for the Magnum Program. He played baseball during the summer. One of his favorite teachers is Ms. Bartel. She made it? Ms. Bartel made it? There you go. Okay. I'm glad to see her make it. But if that's his favorite teacher, and Quentin, his mom and dad, you guys can raise your hand up. Hey, Quentin, you can come and stop. Let's get Quentin a hand. You don't want to talk. Yeah, can you?
Jerry's not going to let anybody else talk.